Good morning, I'm Berks County Commissioner Christian Leinbach and I want to welcome you to our June 23 Commissioners Board Meeting. Yes, we're having it on an unusual day. That is because we don't have a quorum for a meeting this Thursday and there's, yeah, there is a meeting on July the 3rd, but we didn't have one last week. So there's a lot on the agenda today. I want to thank everyone for making adjustments to their schedule, our IS folks, and for Amanda for getting the notice out in advance of this meeting. We're broadcasting live on Microsoft Teams Live Event, also being broadcast on BCTV and broadcasting on Facebook and YouTube Live. We'll call the meeting to order with a moment of silence followed by pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm going to ask my executive assistant Veronica Lepore to read the public comment notice.
Thank you. Public comment will be accepted in person and through the Q&amp;A function. Please include your first name, last name, and municipality for all comments. Any comments without name and municipality will not be considered. Each citizen can submit one comment. Comment length is dictated by limitations of the platform being used, Teams Q&amp;A, Facebook, and YouTube. In-person comments will be accepted first followed by comments submitted virtually. The meeting comment period is limited to a total of 30 minutes including both in-person and virtual comments. This time period may be extended at the discretion of the board. Please be concise. Comments that are germane to county business will be read during the meeting and should not be considered to be interactive dialogue with the commissioners. The county solicitor shall be the final arbiter of whether a comment is germane and should be read. Any commission response to public comment will be done at the discretion of the commissioners.
Thank you very much Veronica. Are there any additions or corrections for the June 5th meeting minutes? Hearing none, the minutes will stand approved as presented. We had three executive sessions, two on June the 10th, the first one dealt with personnel, real estate, and potential litigation. The second one was just personnel and then another on June 11th dealing with personnel. Any public comment on agenda items and nothing in person, in, online either. We'll move to the agenda. Item 1, authorizing under that, Budget Department, adopt a resolution authorizing 2025 appropriations in the amount of zero per listing dated June 20th of 25. We have several items listed under Human Resources. Authorize the appointment of Nicole Ruela to licensed social worker, County of Berks Youth Shelter. Item 2, authorize the promotion of Shashira Rodriguez Rivera from Account Clerk 2 to Internal Auditor in the Controller's Office. Item 3, authorize the transfer of Travis Dietrich from Senior Financial Analyst to Fiscal Manager in Children and Youth Services. Item 4, authorize the utilization of a temp agency for an information research clerk position in the Tax Claim Office. And item, item 5, authorize the utilization of a temp agency for a payment clerk position in the Clerk of Court's Office. There are several items listed under purchasing. Item A, adopt a resolution authorizing a recommendation to award and further authorizing the Director of Contracts and Procurement to execute three three-year contracts as a result of an invitation to bid for personal emergency response systems for the area agency on aging. Contract number one goes to Response Link LLC doing business as Alert One out of Williamsport. Their unit prices for mobile GPS with fall detection 1595 a month, cellular in-home PERS with fall detection 1599 a month, and standard in-home PERS with fall detection 995 a month. The second contract is going to Life Station Inc. out of Union, New Jersey. Their mobile GPS PERS with fall detection 24 a month, cellular in-home PERS with fall detection 24 a month, and standard in-home PERS with fall detection 18 a month. And contract number three, ConnectAmerica.com LLC, Ballackinwood, PA, mobile GPS PERS with fall detection 30 a month, cellular in-home PERS with fall detection 21 a month, standard in-home PERS with fall detection 21 a month. The vendors are required to hold their unit prices above fixed and firm for a period of three years. The county reserves the right to extend contract for additional three, for three additional one-year terms upon mutual agreement of both parties in accordance with the terms of the contracts governing the unit prices. Item B, adopt a resolution authorizing a recommendation to award and further authorizing the Director of Contracts and Procurement to execute a contract as a result of an invitation to bid fire extinguisher services for a period of one year for the participating members of the Berks County Cooperative Purchasing Council, including Berks County, as follows. Alarm tech suppression, Reading, PA. The estimated annual expenditure for Berks portion only is $39,773. The vendors required to hold the unit prices above fixed and firm for a period of six months and to allow for cap redetermination and pricing for an additional six-month period resulting in an agreement for a total of 12 months as detailed in the invitation to bid. The county reserves the right to extend the contract for four additional one-year terms upon mutual agreement of both parties in accordance with the terms of the contract governing the unit prices. Item C, adopt a resolution authorizing a recommendation to award and further authorizing the Director of Contracts and Procurement to execute a three-year contract as a result of the request for proposal for the Pennsylvania Medicare Education and Decision Insight for the Berks County Area Agency on Aging as follows. Goes to Berks Encore at a Reading, PA, total not to exceed $115,833 per year. The county reserves the right to extend the contract for two additional one-year terms upon mutual agreement of both parties in accordance with the terms of the contract governing the unit prices. Item D, adopt a resolution authorizing a recommendation to award and further authorizing the Director of Contracts and Procurement to execute as a result of an invitation to bid a contract for the Berks County Jail Parking Lot Access Drive and Access Area Improvements Project as identified herein. That goes to Spear Excavating LLC at a Palm, PA, total bid amount not to exceed $485,545.41. Commissioner Rivera has one item, adopt a resolution authorizing the reappointment of Helen Flynn, Reading, Pennsylvania, to the Berks County Public Libraries Advisory Board for a three-year term expiring on December 31st of 2028. There are several items listed under the Commissioners. Item A, adopt a resolution authorizing Alan Piper, Transportation Planner, to execute a PA Department of Environmental Protection, Chapter 105, Water Obstructions and Encroachment General Permit Registration for the Berks Road Bridge Replacement Project over a tributary to the Plum Creek, Plum Creek, yeah, there we go, Plum Creek. That was my redneck version, or I don't know, western, there's a creek out west somewhere. Plum Creek in Burn Township. Item B, adopt a resolution authorizing the Chair to execute a construction license agreement with the City of Reading for construction of wastewater pump station facility on a portion of the county-owned property at Stone Cliff Recreation Area, subject to final review and approval of the agreement by the Berks County Solicitor's Office. Item C, adopt a resolution authorizing Kevin S. Barnhart, Chief Operations Officer, or in his absence Larry Medalia, Deputy Chief Operations Officer, to execute and deliver and offer acceptance to First Energy Pennsylvania Utilities, accepting an incentive payment of $34,131 for the installation of energy conservation measures at the Berks County Courthouse, and further authorizing the Director of Facilities and Operations to execute and deliver such payment request forms, letters of attestation, and the certifications and documents as are necessary to obtain the incentive payment, subject to review and approval by the Berks County Solicitor's Office. Item D, adopt a resolution authorizing the reappointment of Jenny Batista, HR, SHRM CP, Human Resource Consultant, Herbine Mosteller, HR Consulting, to the Berks County Workforce Development Board for a term effective July 1st of 25 through June 30th of 28. Item E, adopt a resolution authorizing the reappointment of Brian Nowacker, Director, Learning and Development, East Penn Manufacturing, to the Berks County Workforce Development Board for a term effective July 1st of 25 through June 30th of 28. Item F, adopt a resolution authorizing the reappointment of Michael P. Faschetti, Vice President, Human Resources, Reading Truck, to the Berks County Workforce Development Board for a term effective July 1st of 25 through June 30th of 28. Item G, adopt a resolution authorizing the reappointment of Christina R. Hauck, Director, HR and Strategic Planning, Piper Machine Services, to the Berks County Workforce Development Board for a term effective July 1st of 25 through June 30th of 28. Item H, adopt a resolution authorizing the reappointment of Barry H. Unger, President, Vision Mechanical, Inc., to the Berks County Workforce Development Board for a term effective July 1st of 25 through June 30th of 28. I, adopt a resolution authorizing the reappointment of William Doward, Business Agent for Sheet Metal Workers Local 19, to the Berks County Workforce Development Board for a term effective July 1st of 25 through June 30th of 28. Item J, adopt a resolution authorizing the appointment of Edward Bernitsky, Training Director for IBEW Local 742, to the Berks County Workforce Development Board to fulfill the remainder of the term effective July 1st of 2025 through June 30th of 2026. Item K, adopt a resolution authorizing the execution of the settlement agreement between the County of Berks Doing Business as Berksheim Nursing and Rehabilitation and the UFCW Bargaining Unit for the term January 1st of 25 to December 31st of 28. Item L, adopt a resolution authorizing the Chair to execute the grant funding agreement between the County of Berks and the Pennsylvania Commission for the United States Semi-Quintennial for Grant Funding to be used toward the Star Spangled Spectacular Concert and Firework Show, and further authorizing the Chair to execute all grant award notifications and associated grant documents. Item M, adopt a resolution authorizing the termination of the lease agreement between the County of Berks and Service Access Management for office space leased at 19N 6th North Street, Reading, PA, effective August 31st of 2025, and further authorizing the Solicitor's Office to issue notice of termination to Sam Inc. in accordance with the terms of the lease agreement. And item N, adopt a resolution authorizing the Chair to execute the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act Form approving the final submission of the program year 25 through 28, Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act Regional and Local Plans for the Southeast Region Counties approved by Berks County Workforce Development Board on June 20th of 2025. Item 2, a motion to authorize the execution of contract agreements and amendments as set forth in the Contract Agenda Listing dated June 20th of 2025. There are a total of 37 contracts. There's one with Archives, six with the Area Agency on Aging, one with the Assessment Office, one with the Berksheim, four with Career Link, eight with Children and Youth Services, seven jointly with Children and Youth Services and Juvenile Probation, one with the Department of Emergency Services, one with Elections, two with Information Systems, one with the Mailprint Center, one with Mental Health and Developmental Disabilities, one with Purchasing, and two with the Solicitor's Office. Item 3, a motion to authorize the execution of payments and electronic transfers for the week ending June 27th of 2025. And 4, a motion to authorize the execution of employee payroll dispersments dated July 1st of 2025. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented. I will second that motion. The motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion is carried. We'll move now to reports of our Treasurer and Controller. We'll begin with our Berks County Treasurer, Mitch Darkort. Mitch?
Thank you Commissioner. Today we have an opening balance of $296,979,212.00. We have a balance declared of $5,253,473.13, leaving us with a balance of $291,725,738.87. Thank you.
Thank you very much Mitch. We'll move now to the County Controller's Report with Joe Ruttero. Joe?
Thank you Commissioner Leinbach. My apologies, the report I'm going to read is last week's report. Fortunately, I do not see that I have the week ending of this week. So if that's okay with you, I'll go ahead and read. So this was for the week ending 6/20/2025. We have a total accounts payable of $16,422,651.13. We have a total employee payroll of $5,568,179.57 for a total cash disbursement of $21,990,830.70. I think because of the meeting got moved to Monday, I am not in, in receipt of the weekend ending of this week. So my apologies to that.
Not a problem.
Thank you.
That will move to our Deputy Chief Operations Officer, Larry Medalia.
Thank you Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to acknowledge in this heatwave that we have coming, our folks who work outside and take care of our parks and our outside facilities and grounds. They're out there working hard to make sure that our public can enjoy the the great beauty that we have in this county, but it's going to be a stinking hot week. So, thank you.
I'll add to that, especially be careful the next three days, and really anyone, you're spending time outside, hydrate. Even if you don't think you need to hydrate, that's probably one of the number one issues that can occur. I think the, as of this morning, the high on Wednesday, I believe is 100. It's kind of shifted. It was as high as 103, it was as low as 98, but at some point it doesn't matter and you add the humidity to it. Just take care of yourself. Good, good point. We'll move to Commissioners' Reports and we'll start with Commissioner Dante Santoni.
Thank you Mr. Chairman. We all for, haven't had a meeting in a few weeks. So there's been a lot of things happening. I'll just touch on a few, on a few highlights that the Board, the Board and others have, have had the opportunity to attend. We had the Berks County Conservation District event occurred a week or so ago, Georgie Mushroom. It was a great event. Dean, Dean does a wonderful job putting it together and invites all the legislators. This year, as I said, it was at Georgie Mushroom, which was sort of nostalgic for me as my parents and grandparents were in the mushroom business. We had a mushroom plant right across the street, pretty much from Georgies, and my father worked for Fred for many, many years. So that was, that was an event that I thoroughly enjoyed. We also attended, and county sponsored the Strike Out the Stigma at the Reading Phillies with our Mental Health Developmental Disability Agency. Pam and her team did a great job and we do that every year. I guess we've been doing it for now 11 years to try to, to try to put a focus on people getting the health that they, help that they need with, with the issues of mental health. The Board, I'm sure Commissioner Leinbach might be discussing this a little bit. The Board, along with our executive assistants, took a trip along the Schuylkill with the event sponsored by the Schuylkill River Greenway. The sojourn from Muhlenberg at the Jim Dietrich Park to Reading Riverfront and then a couple of people went on to, to Birdsboro, but a couple didn't. So, but it was a, it was a great event. I enjoyed it. The weather didn't cooperate. It was rainy and cold, but I thought it was pretty cool and I only ran into the rocks a couple of times with, with our, with our canoe. Had a tour of the Helping Harvest facility down near the Goggle Works with Jay World with Helping Harvest, our city of Reading, Jim Boskov and Scott Gruber. I thought it was a great event that, that, a great tour and it's going to be a great facility. They're providing food for underprivileged and BCIU is going to have a, going to have a childcare facility there that, that's going to do a lot of great things for that part of the city of Reading. So it's, it's moving forward and we look forward to its completion in the very near future. I also participated at the Reading Phillies with the Commissioners and the Berks County Ag Land Preservation Board, 80,000 acres of farmland preservation. That's been going on for 35 years. 830 parcels have been saved, so we should be very proud of that. And I also want, I know we've mentioned this before, but there's an event coming up to honor Legacy of Leadership, Modesto Fume of the Opportunity House. He's retiring and we're honoring him this coming week and he's done a great job and I want to give Modesto a shout out for all the great work that he's done through the years and I wish him the best in his retirement. So that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you very much Commissioner Santoni. I'm going to touch on a few of the same things. I want to also give kudos to the Berks County Conservation District Dean and their planning team. In the last couple of years, they've moved away from doing an annual legislative breakfast at the Ag Center and instead used it to highlight projects that they're working on. And as a result, they had it this time at the Georgie, Georgie Mushroom Farm. I found out about some connections that I didn't know about with Commissioner Santoni and we have some mutual friends, Mark Gaspari, his father, Gino Gaspari, that I've known for a number of years and I believe Gino and your father, very close.
I know each other.
So it just, it was really great to see the, what the Conservation District does and the impact that they have, especially in the arena of agriculture and really appreciated to see the legislators and some of their staff that came out to that event. Strike Out the Stigma is always an awesome event and it's an opportunity to challenge the public that mental health is a treatable disease and if people realize that and focus more on the fact that it can be treated in many, many, if not the vast majority of cases, pulling away from the stigma can help that occur. The Commissioners threw out the first, or some of the first pitches, we all got it across the plate. So that's what, we'll go with that story, right?
I embarrassingly bounced one, but it was bad.
But it was across the plate, right?
Eventually it made it.
On the center of the plate and your colleague followed you.
I think he was worse.
Was it worse? Yes. Anyhow.
Sorry, Michael. I don't know where you are.
But again, I want to, I want to thank our MHDT team, Pam and their whole crew, some of their volunteers. They had a table set up with literature and giveaways and that's really where the interaction takes place. I was, and I, every year I'm amazed, the number of people that stop, yes, to get freebies, but an opportunity for that staff to be able to talk to folks in our community. We also, I think all, all three of us at the Helping Harvest, I think so, yeah, all three Commissioners were able to do a tour this past week at the new commercial kitchen, Helping Harvest. It's next to Goggle Works. Very, very impressive operation. Pretty amazing what they are able to accept that they couldn't accept before, bulk type food items that they're able to use this kitchen to break down and to get out into the community where it is most needed. They've got some exciting things that they're working on in the community. They're working with one of our local higher eds on a possible culinary arts program. I think this could be a game changer. It would not just focus on restaurant level, but looking at institutional level culinary. So for a hotel, for a higher ed, it, they have state-of-the-art equipment there for that type of a setup. So I was very, very impressed. The event last week to celebrate 80,000 acres of preserved farmland. I have, I've been here 18 years. I've never attended an ag-focused event of that caliber. I know Christine, you were there. I think Cody wasn't. Larry was there. We have a number of our people there, our Ag Department along with Pam Menett and Derek Harris. I don't know, was any of your staff involved in the planning? They, they hit it out of the park and it was at the First Energy Stadium, but it was done so well. Former Commissioner Mark Scott was there and was recognized. To his credit, he played a significant role in the early days of Ag Land Preservation here in Berks County. So it was right that he was recognized. There were a number of other people. Yeah, Secretary Russ Reading was there. Secretary Reading has been very good to Berks County over the years. He has served under multiple administrations, both Republican and Democrat, and is always a great presenter and that event was no exception. I also want to note, I believe it's tomorrow evening, several of us will be attending the retirement celebration for Modesto Fume from Opportunity House. He probably is the most foremost authority and practical application person when it comes to services for the homeless community. He's done so much over the years and he's pretty much a low-key guy, even when things get tense, he rarely does. He just does his job and gets it done and I want to publicly thank him for his leadership and service. I'm sure we'll continue to see him involved in the community, but he is retiring from his role at Opportunity House. The last thing I wanted to touch on is the Schuylkill River Sojourn and I have a couple of things to share if I'm able to do this. The first one is a photo. The second one is a video clip, but I couldn't help myself with this photo. This kind of encapsulates, let's see if it comes up. If you look at the picture, this is Dante. Lynn was not thrilled and the pictures don't do justice. It was cold and wet. That might be hard to think of a week ago. A week ago, it was cold and wet and I didn't have a problem until you stopped at lunchtime and you weren't paddling. Then it got cold. I wish we had had a picture though of Commissioner Rivera at lunchtime. Somebody got him a blanket and he's walking around the, eating lunch in a blanket. I asked him, did he need his binky too, but he didn't, he didn't care for that comment. So I'm going to stop sharing that and I have one other item related to that. I put together a little video and hopefully I am able to make this happen. Even before it started. So that was the Schuylkill River Sojourn. It was really a pretty neat event, and why I'm, I guess, yeah, I'm off here, I'm good. I've heard from a number of people, probably some here in the county that want to join us next year. I'm believing it can't be as bad a weather two years in a row, but I probably just jinxed it for next year. But it was a lot of fun, I will tell you. When we got to, there was good news and bad news when we got to the end. We were told we should arrive at the Allegheny Aqueduct, which happens to be a county park, Beidler House, around 4:00. And having never done this stretch, it's hard to figure out exactly where you are on the river at times. We got there an hour and 15 minutes early, and that was because of how high the water was. So when the waters, oh, Veronica said in her muscles, too. She was paddling up front, but it was really starting to rain, and when we pulled the canoes and kayaks up, my first step up onto the grass, I went flat on my face, went down, several people actually went down, and then I had to get Kent Himmelreich to come back because we had to carry the canoe, and that was a little much, up the bank, cross a path, cross the street, and over to my trailer where I had everything parked. And we did not stick around for dinner. We were both in agreement, we were ready to head home and jump in a hot shower. It was, it was a good time, but I hope we get better weather next year. And I got to tell you, I'm waiting to hear the report. If you watched the weather the rest of the week, it wasn't a whole lot better. So I'm not sure, we watched people at Jim Dietrich Park, all of us saw, in the morning, packing up their wet tents to put them in their kayaks or canoes, and then we watched people unpacking their wet tents in a, in a rain shower. And you do that several days in a row, you're pretty, you're pretty miserable. So there were 130 people on the river that Monday, a week ago, although today would be, it'd be a nice ride, but it'd be hot.
It'd be hot today.
It'd be cooking. So that's all that I have with that. Any comments from our row officers?
I don't have anything to add at this time.
I just wanted to mention that I had planned to go to the 80,000 acres last week because June 19th fell on a Thursday, there was no Commissioners' Meeting. I took the opportunity to run down and see my folks in Florida. So I could, it could be argued that I brought this heat back with me, because it was just as stifling down there as it is here. But hopefully our, I know Rajna was, was going to probably go to that, and hopefully she-
Rajna was there.
So she was representing the Controller's Office at the event, and, you know, we're excited for that milestone as well, and the fact that the Controller's Office has that settlement, you know, we were involved in settlement for, on behalf of the county, so was glad she was able to make it.
Yeah, one of the things that I never realized, and I was, I forget who I was talking to, I don't think it was Kim, somebody else, this was all started with a bond issue, which is great, and, and that bond issue ran out, I don't know, 2009, 2010, and we were asked, the Commissioners at the time, would we initiate another bond issue? We didn't. We put $1 million in a year. What I realized is, when you do a bond issue, there's, you have to finance it. So you're putting a significant amount of money in the pocket of lenders. By doing what we're doing right now, 100% of that contribution goes to buy land and match money with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. I believe Kim told me, we've been averaging $2 million from the Commonwealth for every million that the county puts in. That is a really good deal, that's very hard to just ignore that. And we were also told, we had, one of the first times that anyone can remember, that they had a farm rank at 100% in the soils rating, which is, that's really pretty amazing.
I just had the opportunity to spend some time with Amanda Burkart, so to go over the Ag program. That'll air actually on the County Connections in July, and Berks County is second, only to Lancaster, and they're very proud of the fact that we're, we're up there at the top of the pack, leading the way on preserved farms in Pennsylvania. So anyway, it'll be interesting to see, maybe one day we'll be the number-one county, hopefully. We'll see. Thank you.
Very good. Any public comment? Nothing in person? Nothing online? That brings us to the end of our agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adjourn.
Meeting stands adjourned.